Everybody getting settled in here, it's a little cramped up here. All right, this time I'd like to ask Reverend Jim McGraw to come forward and give our invocation this evening from Grace Fellowship Church, thank you.
Join me in prayer, please. Lord Jesus, just reminded of a prayer the Apostle Paul in Colossians that says, masking, that we would be filled with the knowledge of your will, with all spiritual wisdom and understanding, so that we could walk worthy of you, and please you in every way, and be fruitful in every good work. So we ask, Lord Jesus, that in a special way as only you can do, that you would awaken our hearts and minds to your deep passionate longing for us and for this city, that we would have remarkable clarity about that. Not only that, that we would have incredible wisdom and understanding way beyond our years of experience and education and know-how, but that we would have some sense of awakening, of understanding about things that's beyond ourselves. It's only you can do, we just ask that you would gift us in that way, that we would know that we know that there's a certain direction that we need to go, because you've implanted that in our hearts, although we could walk worthy of you, Lord Jesus, of your purposes for the city, for our lives, for our families in this community. We know that your heart is pleased when our hearts are open in that way, and by faith we proceed. What you do in a wonderful way is that you bless us in fruitfulness, productivity, and And so, these are gifts that we achieve, the blessings that we ask for and receive. And so we ask for those things this evening, in Jesus' name we pray, amen, and amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, now with our regular agenda, first item, Citizens' General Discussion, I've got one input, and others may, are welcome to come forward if, following, I'll just ask Mr. Frank Chamberlain, come forward and just state your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Frank Chamberlain, and I live at thirteen twenty-one West Frost Street, here in Stevieville. And to be more technical, I live at the corner of Frost Street and Chamberlain Street, oddly enough, but that's, my issue is, been a couple of years in the making now, I have lived at my address since the summer of two thousand eight, and recent, since two thousand fifteen, Chamberlain Street and my block on Frost Street, and that, my neighbors on either side have flooded every time that it rains for an extended period. In fact, I can just mark my calendar by it, if it's gonna rain for fifteen minutes, I know that the waters can start running down Chamberlain Street and into our yard. It's almost like it channels it there. And from two thousand eight until May twenty fifteen, it rained a lot when I lived there, and nothing ever happened. It didn't rain, it didn't flood or any kind of issues. And the only thing that has changed between when I moved in there and now is these apartments, I believe CEO apartments, have been built directly behind me, and there's been a big parking lot by Chamberlain School, where the college kids park. And I just can't help but think that's, that due diligence was not made toward channeling that water so that it doesn't just run down Chamberlain Street like a river and flood not only my house, but flood my neighbors on either side's house. I thought they were gonna be here today, but they are not here. And all I wanted to do is just address the council, let that be known to everyone here, and hopefully something can be done about it before March or April, because it will happen again in March or April, that's, I can just mark my calendar by it. And that's, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, I've heard, you know, anecdotally, talking to people around town, that that has happened to them also whenever an apartment complex has been built nearby, or a parking lot, or so on. And I just wanted to go on record that in my neighborhood, it has become a major issue for all of your blocks as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. We'll then proceed with the update on the hotel occupancy tax on, and Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on December the fourteenth, the council met to discuss the creation of the Tax Tourist and Visitor Bureau. From that meeting, we, as staff, were charged to continue our research and to enlist the assistance of the Texas Hotel Lodging and Hotel and Lodging Association. I wanted to report back where we are on this in a public forum. We have a conference call scheduled with THLA tomorrow at ten o'clock to discuss the design, development, and operation of the TBB. During the meeting, several items were discussed, and five items appear to be the most pressing in the creation of the entity. And I'll go over them very briefly, I've passed out a copy of what are my notes that I'm working from tonight. There are alternatives listed, and please, the alternatives are basically what we could think of as potential answers, I'm not saying these are the answers, I'm not saying they're the only answers, I'm just saying they're the ones that we came up with. The first question that I feel like needs to be answered is what should be the structure of the organization? Is it ours, is it a contractor, is it a hybrid between the city and the chamber, is it a hybrid between us and the 501(c)(6), should we function, should we establish a 501(c)(6), should we contract with a private company, should we, you know, there, I'm sure there are other options. What employee positions are necessary for the efficient operation of the TBB, a director and an administrative assistant? There's been some discussion as to having multiple part-time positions rather than two full-time positions, having a full-time director and then multiple part-times. At the end of the day, from our perspective, it really is not important whether we have one person that does the administrative assistant type job, or two, or three, or whatever part-times. The function of those positions, position or positions, will be the same, whether it's full-time or part-time. How is the organization gonna be governed, committee, job description for the committee, the ins and outs that we have for all of the advisory committees that the city has, where are we gonna put the Visitors Bureau? I've broken that down into two, that's temporary locations and permanent locations, temporary being one to four years, and permanent being beyond that. And what do we do concerning the existing funds with the Chamber of Commerce? The reason I wanted to do this update is, these are questions that really need to be answered in the near term, hopefully sometime this month. Once we get guidance from THLA tomorrow, I think we'll have some better direction to advise the council, suggestions to advise the council. We were charged to bring back solutions to this, to this meeting, and that's the reason I am doing the update. Some of the, some of the suggestions on this document are feasible, some are not feasible, some are, I'll say palatable, and some are probably not, given the current set of circumstances. I want you to know that we are continuing to work on this, and that this is taking a significant amount of time. That's my brief update.
Any questions for Alan?
So if you had this meeting on tomorrow, this conference call, are you scheduling a meeting, work session, or anything like that later in the month, this gotta be resolved this month?
Yes, or I think it's the eleventh, I believe it's the eleventh is the, the conference schedule for our next, our next meeting for the...
Got any questions, Alan?
Are you documenting the amount of time that you're expending on this, and other staff members as well?
Generally, yes, sir.
And the hot tax is gonna reimburse the city for those expenditures?
I would imagine so, yes, sir. It's, it's the, the hot tax, the city's relationship with the hot tax is very similar to the, to the relationship with SITA. It is a, for lack of a better term, a component of the city, however, city tax funds should not be expended toward the furtherance of that, so yes, we are keeping track for reimbursement purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Not to the six minutes like some professions do, but...
Other questions? Any other questions for Mr. Barnes? Well, I guess, Alan, just a couple of things, I would assume that you're gonna bounce these items off of the THLA folks tomorrow and see what their suggestions and recommendations are regarding these items?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And I also thought, I just wanted to make note, I don't know if all the council receives the emails from, I got an email this morning from the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts Transparency Team, reminding cities that the eighty-fifth legislative session passed Senate Bill twelve twenty-one, which added section three fifty-one zero zero nine to this Texas tax, tax code, requiring all municipalities that levy a local hotel occupancy tax to report certain information to the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts annually beginning twenty eighteen. And Alan, I know you're aware of that, I believe that report's due, it says here by February twentieth of this year. That's a new requirement, and I, I think it's timely, the effort that we've, we've placed here on how the city is managing the hotel occupancy tax, because it aligns itself now for us to be able to comply with this new law that's in place, that addresses the categories and many items that we've been talking about.
That's correct.
Anything else on, on that, so we'll, you'll have your meeting tomorrow, and then we'll meet on the eleventh in a work session to talk in more detail?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we've got the Planning and Zoning section, we've got an annual report from the chairman, Mark Wallace.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to give you an update on what the Planning and Zoning Commission has accomplished over the past year, pardon me, as well as our proposed work program for the coming year. This is required by section twenty point one H of the zoning ordinance to be done on a yearly basis. This past year, we recommended to the city the adopted thoroughfare plan, we recommended to the city the adoption of the wireless communications tower ordinance, and within we also recommended an updated sign ordinance that had not been updated since two thousand and five. As a commission, we've done seven rezoned cases this year, as well as three subdivision plats. With regards to twenty eighteen, and what we wanna work on, what we're planning on working on, we plan to tackle the future land use, which should be done annually, as well as reviewing the comprehensive plan, goals, and objectives, again, on an annual basis. With regards to zoning, pardon me, in the areas of parking, we plan to look at stacked parking, which will address drive-through restaurants, we're also gonna be looking at changing the B-five zoning so that restaurants that do not serve alcohol, and restaurants that do serve alcohol are treated the same. These restaurants still must meet the T A B C requirements, but from a zoning standpoint, they're the same, as is evidenced by some case law that shows that you can't treat them differently. And at the same time, we're still gonna keep B-four private club zoning the same. Another issue that we'd like to look at would be the potential historic overlay district in the downtown area. We're also gonna be taking a look at lot sizes, including R, R one point five from sixty to one hundred, from sixty to one hundred feet, to a smaller area of fifty to fifty by one hundred feet. We also plan to look at R-one single-family residential district, R-two, one and two-family residential district, and R-three, multiple-family districts, to determine if the current lot sizes are appropriate and feasible for building. As chairman, I'm also obligated to inform you that all members of the commission have met the requirements for attendance, and we're also very pleased to announce that, or to welcome our newest members, Bruce Delater in place two, and Cliff McCurry in place four. I'd also like to acknowledge Milton Horner as an outgoing commissioner, and thank him for his service over the past two years, and I would definitely be remiss if I did not acknowledge Janet Whitley, who retired this year, for all of her many years of service and time and effort for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions for Wallace? Okay, well, while I got you here, I just wanna just say one thing, thank you for your leadership and work, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a really important element of our city government, and you as a team do yeoman's work for our community, and just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you very much, we have a, we, I will say, we have a great team of commissioners on there, we all work together, and we're all working hard for the city of Stevieville.
Yeah, and I also wanna say, it's noteworthy, just for me, that you're looking at this family housing issue, we have a housing issue in Stevieville, I believe, and the ability to look at these lot sizes and empower the redevelopment of some areas, I think will be an outcropping of that, so, so thank you for taking that up as a part of your initiative.
Our pleasure.
All right. All right, next we've got several zoning cases that we'll consider, and at this time I'll open a public hearing on case RZ twenty-seven zero zero seven, applicants to rezone one hundred Wolf Nursery Suite one ninety-eight, from B-two Retail and Commercial Business District to B-five Restaurant Alcohol Beverage Service. And Jeremy?
Mayor, council, Eppen Dong Dong Dwan and Phil Rainey, representing PRVS Holdings LLC, are requesting a rezone of property located at one hundred Wolf Nursery from B-two to The property is served by the eight-inch City Sewer Main located on Wolf Nursery, property is served by a six-inch sanitary sewer main located on Wolf Nursery. Property, as you guys may know, it's front, it's a big shopping center, but it is fronting Wolf Nursery, and so that is a maintained street by the city. The particular building that we're looking at is the corner building, they're looking at doing a sushi restaurant with some, with some alcohol, saki, light Japanese beer. So this is the, kinda the measurements of that, the size of that building. The current zoning is, like I said, is B-two in the front, or on the backside of it, Staples and the, I forget the Burks, I think that's in there, and the front side is B-four, which is where Chili's is at, and Chili's is owned B-four, and their future land use calls for it to be commercial, and so, staff recommends approval, and P and Z had a unanimous decision to recommend approval to full council.
Any questions for Jeremy? Okay, if not, I'll ask...
Jeremy, help me remember what the seating requirements are for that, it's so many, so many seats per square feet, or what's the seating requirements for that B-five operation?
They'll just meet, they're gonna need to meet the T A B C requirements.
Are they more strict than ours?
I don't know that we, I don't know that we have.
We have restaurant requirements, and for B-four and B-five also, if my memory is correct, there is a seating...
They must be more restrictive than us, so I know they had to meet the T A B C, I mean, we, I don't think they're going over any occupancy or anything like that, as far as my knowledge, nothing triggered any kinda, anything when it came to the alcohol, so...
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Okay, if not, I'll ask anyone wishing to speak in favor to come forward at this time. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, at this time I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move, that we approve ordinance number twenty eighteen oh dash zero one, rezoning property located at one hundred Wolf Nursery Road Suite one nine eight from B-two to B-five.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Ms. Trussell, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero one, rezon, property located at one hundred Wolf Nursery Road Suite one ninety-eight, from B-two Retail and Commercial Business District to B-five Restaurant Alcohol Beverage Service, any discussion? Now we proceed to vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, that motion carries, all ayes, one nay, Mr. Next. Next item on the agenda is open a public hearing for case RZ twenty-seven teen zero zero eight, request to rezone property Lot Ten, as recorded in document twenty sixteen oh two seven seven nine, Block one fifty-two, from I Industrial District to B-two Retail and Commercial Business District. Good job.
Mayor, council, this rezone request is, is from the Allsup store, it's more of a houseclean item, that probably should've been done before they did the parking lot, however, we are here, and the use that it is now is commercial, you see the bottom purple part, it should all be one commercial zoning, and then we're gonna have, we'll have a subsequent replat that goes with it as one of the other items. The city, the property is served by a six-inch City Sewer Main, or eight-inch Sewer Main and a, and a six-inch Water Main, its property is fronting the South Loop. Property for which the B-zone is requested is bordered to north, south, and west by commercial districts, and across all the, Old Heiko Road is a single-family district. Staff isn't having any objections to the rezone, planning and zoning unanimously recommended to council for the rezone. Future land use does call for it to be all commercial, so the whole area will be uniform, you know, at some point, still a single-family home. I can entertain any questions if you have any...
Okay, any questions for Jeremy?
And that includes the property that we rezoned recently below that, is that correct?
No, the property that's, there's still, the property that we rezoned is the green right underneath the purple, that was the one that we rezoned, it was industrial as well, and it, we already, we already changed that one to commercial, this, the purple one is already owned by Allsup.
So those just aren't consistent with the rest of it?
That's right, that's right.
Sir, no questions?
I would just ask, so we've learned from this, and we won't, so in the future, when something like this comes up, we'll take care of it in the beginning, is that the idea anyways?
Yes, this was done, the previous, the previous staff did not rezone it when it got done, so...
Okay, all right, thanks, Jeremy.
Any other questions? All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, at this time I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McClinton, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero two, rezone the property being part of Lot Ten, as recorded in the document number twenty sixteen oh two seven seven nine of the official public records of Eret County, Block one fifty-two, of the city addition to the city of Stevieville, from I Industrial District to B-two Retail and Commercial District. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. All right, at this time I'll open a public hearing, one fifty, South Loop.
Mayor, council, similar, similar case, this is a replat for, on the Allsup, the same, same property, more of a houseclean item, replat of lots three, part lot of Ten, as recorded in document two thousand sixteen zero two seven seven nine of the official public records of Eret County, Texas, and six R, Block one fifty-two, of the city addition to the city of Stevieville, into Lot Twelve, Block one fifty-two of the city addition of the Dupree Survey, eight one nine six of Eret County. Current zoning, we just now rezoned that to commercial, water and sewer is served by the, from the city, the property is fronting the South Loop. Unanimous decision by Planning and Zoning to recommend this to full council, and staff recommends it as well.
Questions for Jeremy?
Jeremy, does this change all of this particular property to a single lot by replating it all into one instead of several parcels?
That's right, and typically, you replat a property before you allow development on a property, and that, that was a step that was missed, is it didn't get replatted prior to them doing the parking lot, is the step that got missed, so it should've been done prior, and it meets all the state, you know, requirements as far as replating that property, so there shouldn't be any reason why we wouldn't replat it.
It's a little more complicated than housekeeping, but that's a large portion of it, is to try to unify that, that parcel under a single ownership, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeremy? I'll open for anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, at this time I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the replat.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, s, motion by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve replat of lots three, part of Lot Ten, as recorded in document twenty sixteen oh two seven seven nine, Block one fifty-two, into Block Twelve, one fifty-two. Let's see, I have that right. Is there an ordinance with that?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Any discussion? All right, we proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote. All right, go ahead.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing case TF two thousand seventeen zero zero one, it's considered recommend an amendment to twenty thou, twenty thirty comprehensive plan with amendment to thoroughfare plan by changing the classifications of Christie Plaza from a proposed minor arterial, and Lockhart Road from a proposed local road to a proposed collector streets for both of those. The thoroughfare plan for Stevieville provides a framework for transportation system to offer choices in how residents travel, includes recommendations for corridor alignments to preserve mobility, add connectivity as the community grows. So the main reasons for is provide access mobility for residents, physical stewardship, and preserve local character preference. Staff is recommending to amending the thoroughfare plan by changing the classifications of Christie Plaza and Lockhart Road to collector roads. The changes proposed should encourage development south of Washington, the minor arterial requires a hundred to hundred and twenty foot right-of-way. We've seen this back in July, we actually tabled... We've seen this back in July, we actually tabled this, this, this item until we had more, uh, I guess, a little more direction on the developments. So this is the proposed, or this is the, the, uh, adopted thoroughfare plan. What we're looking at doing is changing Christie Plaza to a collector and Lockhart adding a collector, which is currently, uh, just a, it's currently just a local road. And so we're actually, we're taking one arterial away and adding two collector roads. Originally, we were talking about Christie pla- or Wolf Nursery, um, removing that, that, um, classification as a arterial road and making that a collector as well. Uh, we held tight to that, and we're gonna keep, uh, Wolf Nursery as an arterial, uh, so that classification has not changed. The only classification they're changing is Christie Plaza is going from arterial to collector. And we're adding, uh, a classification of lo- uh, from local road to collector for Lockhart. Did, uh, run this through P and Z. P and Z did recommend, uh, approval, uh, unanimous approval to bring to council for, for final approval.
Questions for Jeremy?
I have a couple other slides.
Okay, go ahead.
You guys may have seen these. So the collector is basically a thirty-six to forty foot pavement, sixty to seventy foot right of way. A minor arterial, uh, is fifty-four to fifty-six foot of pavement with a hundred, a hundred and twenty foot right of way. Um, example of a collector would be, um, we could play name the street, but we won't. Well, uh, this is Harbin Street, so it's typically two, sometimes three lanes. You could have a turn lane in the middle, usually plenty of, uh, room on the sides for either a bike lane or, or, um, maybe a walking path on the side like sidewalk. Example of a minor arterial would be Wolf Nursery. You see the median down the middle, two lanes on each side. So, the, the classifications, the local road wa- is a thirty-one foot, be going back to that, thirty-one foot of pavement from curb to curb. Uh, we're looking at expand that to thirty-six to forty foot of pavement and a sixty to seventy foot of right of way. So, um, I'll entertain any questions, if you guys have any.
Go back to the map that shows the, uh, there you go. Okay, questions?
Yes, sir. The Christie Plaza comes in and goes down and makes a, a sweeping turn back to the east and, and crosses Lockhart. Does it tie back into Wolf Nursery Road eventually over there? One map shows that it does, and that one does not. Is it designed to make that as a loop, more or less?
So you want it from Christie Plaza to Wolf Nursery?
Well, that.
Well, at some point, I think they're all gonna tie into Lockhart, or a, one specific road. Now, how, what that looks like as development comes through, in, in my mind, I, I think they should all somehow tie into Lockhart, and Lockhart be the one, the one that comes across the railroad tracks. You could, you know, tie them all into Wolf Nursery, and that's the one that comes over the railroad tracks, that's gonna take some work with the railroad. Currently, I mean, that's, that's kind of the plan, is to have, um, Christie Plaza tie into Wolf Nursery. Um, at some point, they all gotta come across the tracks, you know, in one unified direction. But the current plan would be Christie Plaza would tie in the Wolf Nursery, yes.
And it will maintain the collector status from three seventy-seven down and across over into Wolf Nursery Road eventually?
If that's.
And it's not gonna be, it's not going to become more narrow down on the bottom part of that leg then?
Right, and, and a lot of, you know, the alignments of roads are very flexible when, as you start talking development. So, as some know, we have two different developments that's kind of playing a part in that area right now. So how those roads all kind of tying together, that's still kind of, as the developments kind of come together. But the idea of the situation is to keep Wolf Nursery and keep that minor arterial that comes across, so we have that as a, as a thorough, thoroughfare, you know, coming through, so.
Jeremy? Uh, Wolf Nursery won't have the median on this side though, on the south side, or what? It won't have the median. Okay, okay.
We're, we're looking at probably a hundred foot right of way, ninety, so it, we may not have the median down the middle.
So, in the discussions, uh, that have been held, uh, there's already a traffic signal at Wolf Nursery, there's one coming at Christie Plaza. Is this structure sufficient to keep us from having to put a signal at Lockhart?
We believe so, um, you know, if you're talking about, uh, uh, on the business, on three seventy-seven to Lockhart, I mean, text I'd be the one that would permit that if it's needed. We wouldn't, I mean, we don't feel that it's gonna be needed, but if it is warranted, text I will be the one that warns that light. If that, did I answer the question, or?
Does text not know when they're putting the light yet?
Um, I think they're, they're still working on the design right now for Christie Plaza. There is no planned light for Lockhart at this time.
Any other questions? Jeremy, it's kind of hard to see on the map, but Lockhart is, is a collector from that intersection, uh, where Christie Plaza comes across Lockhart. So you've got two collector routes going across the railroad right now. Is that just to provide options for development to choose, or is the intent actually to have two crossings?
Uh, the intent's gonna be to have one at some point that, that ties it all, that brings it all in together. And, and how, what that looks like as it comes across the railroad tracks is, you know, still un- to be determined. So we left the Wolf Nursery the way that it was basically proposed and, and passed. But there, I think there's still some work to be done as that depend on how those developments come in and tie in together. But that was the way that the, uh, the thoroughfare was passed through council, so we didn't make any chan- changes to that at this point. So we, the only part that we were changing was the, the classification of Christie Plaza and adding the classification of a collector to Lockhart. We tried not to make it very many changes, um, but that plat that was submitted, um, for Christie Plaza was contingent upon it being a collector road.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm just looking at the before, if you go back one slide, the, the collector here doesn't cross the railroad.
The map is kind of hard to see, but this is actually Lockhart here.
Yeah.
So, there is no classification.
Yeah, I'm looking at Wolf Nursery.
Yeah, Wolf Nursery comes in, they tie it together, and this would be where it would cross. What we're doing is here, and we're leaving Wolf Nursery coming across and crossing down here. Because of this development that's coming through here, we're working to do that, that through there on that side. But the road and where it crosses is very flexible, I mean, we're, that's, that can be worked out with the development, so.
So again, I, if you go to the next slide, what I'm, I don't wanna, I just want to understand, this, this approval is intended to show flexibility with the collector as it crosses the railroad. It's not indicating that we're gonna go to the railroad and request two crossings there?
Right, right. We don't have any intent of, of requesting another, uh, railroad crossing at this time.
Okay.
That, with that, where it's crossing the second time, that's future way down the road, you know, long-term planning.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, again, I don't want to belabor it either, but this is what exists on the, the current thoroughfare map, what you're showing us right there?
That does, that is the current thoroughfare plan. So it actually has on, off of Washington, it actually has two minor arterials coming off Washington. Instead of having, so if we're looking at the two to the right, two to the furthest, to the east, these are the two arterials here. So what we're doing is we're getting rid of this arterial, making a collector, having a collector, leaving that. I mean, now the, the alignment comes down here, the alignment's not, not ver- not super important more than the fact that the arterial is still there, and we can still utilize that for future development. And, and how that comes to play later will, will be determined.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is that you, in, in this, the amendments that you're suggesting, you're, you're simply talking about Christie Plaza and Lockhart Road. And yet, the, the two different maps have two different alignments for Wolf Nursery Road, and that's not mentioned in here at all.
Right, the, the alignment's not the, the important thing, I mean, I can, I can draw Wolf Nursery however I wanted, I have my G I S guy, great. We have a straight line, that's how we draw it. The alignment on the thoroughfare plan, I apologize for that, when we do the thoroughfare plan and we amend it, we'll keep the same alignment for Wolf Nursery. I mean, it'll, it'll still come down, it'll loop down, but we're gonna have, the alignment will be down there, so.
Gotcha, okay.
So it looks like a straight line, but we're, we're not talking about a straight line, so.
Alright. Any other questions?
We're not about no Wolf Nursery anyway, right? We're just about no.
Right, right. Alright, then I'll, uh, ask if anyone wishes to speak in, in favor of the proposal? Anyone's wishing to speak in opposition? Alright, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve the amendments to the thoroughfare plan. It's part of the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, changing the classifications of Christie Plaza and Lockhart Road to collector streets.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to amend the thoroughfare plan of the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, changing the classifications of Christie Plaza and Lockhart Road to collector streets. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote. Okay.
Public hearing case number O R D two thousand seventeen zero zero two is considered recommending ordinance wireless communication facilities to the city of Steenville zoning ordinance. On October eighteenth, uh, the planning zoning commission held a workshop. The commission heard from, uh, a local businessperson and, uh, a president of, uh, the local radio club, um, regarding the proposed ordinance. Uh, there was some changes that were recommended, staff made those changes. What you have in front of you are, uh, with the changes that were recommended, uh, in a full unanimous, uh, support from P and Z for full approval to council.
Any questions for Jeremy?
I have a question somewhat, just a comment, though. Jeremy and commissioners of P and Z, the way you guys brought folks in to talk about this, people that were expert in the field locally, I think is, is a fantastic way to, to handle, uh. Yeah, I think it was fantastic, really applaud you all for that.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Alright, I'll, uh, then ask if anyone's wishing to speak in favor of the, uh, proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McClinton, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero three wireless communication facilities. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote. Alright, now we're gonna move to the Planning and Development Committee report. And, um, got several items to go over this evening, and, uh, Mr. Barnes or Mr. Allen? Since, um, Mr. Warren's not here.
Then you wanna do the honors, you were the chair of that committee for that night.
Well, I would just say, Mr. Allen, have at it.
Well, I was on my way up here.
Excellent work at delegating responsibility.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Uh, on December eighteenth, the planning and development committee met to discuss updating the future land use plan, community development block grant, sidewalk maintenance ordinance, and assigned ordinance, and the adoption of the city's subdivision regulation. The meeting was previously scheduled for December twelfth, but failed to meet, uh, necessary core requirements and was rescheduled. Members of the committee present were Mr. McClinton, Mr. Nix, and Mr. Pendleton, and Mark McClinton served as the chair for the committee. Uh, the first item was the future land use, um, map and the process that we're gonna do to update that. Just, just for the sake of the record, the future land you ma- use map does not change or constitute zoning regulations. Um, it is a, a look at the, the future and what we want the city to look like as it pertains to zoning. It will help us with zoning decisions. The, the committee will be established to update that future land use map, uh, consisting of members from I S D, Tarleton, Keep Steenville Beautiful, Parks and Rec Board, Steadco, Chamber of Commerce, and Two Citizens at Large. The committee that night voted to recommend approval to full council.
Okay. Mark, you got anything?
Wanna go by these individually, or even go through the whole thing, and then we come back to them?
I know, better, better do it individually.
Let's do them, we'll do them one, one at a time.
Well, I just, I just indicate that, uh, at the meeting, Jeremy presented, uh, it was several pages long, the plan, uh, that will be utilized to, to do this, uh, future land use map, uh, update. And I thought it was, it was done well, thank you, sir.
So what we're looking for tonight is a resolution to basically task that committee with updating that future land use.
So any, any questions from the council on that proposal? If not, then I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the, uh, the plan as presented by the committee.
Still moved.
Okay, the motion by Mr. McClinton, and, uh, seconded by Mr. Nix. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote.
Second item on the agenda for that night was the Texas Department of Agriculture Community Development Block Grant. Um, and this, this block grant was specifically for Project Blue. Um, the firms were recommended for approval, uh, went through, they were evaluating, evaluated and ranked using a state-based criteria for experience, work performance, and capacity to perform. Uh, the compet- committees voted to recommend approval for each of the firms, one for, uh, engineering and one for the adminis- administration of the grant.
Any questions on that?
I think, Jeremy, refresh me, no money will be spent until the grant is approved, is that correct?
That's right, and the grant, the, the funds for both of these firms will be paid for through the grant if we get them.
And they are required by the grant too, right?
Oh yeah, we, we have to go out and solicit the R F U process, and we did send them to local firms as well, so, um, and these ones are the ones that were, the ranked, um, at the top based on those criteria.
Okay, so, uh, council, let's, uh, if there are no other questions, that item six and seven, uh, we'll, we'll vote on those separately. The first is, is for the, uh, administrative services contract, uh, for the community development block grant, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the administrative services contract for the block grant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Trussell, seconded by Mr. McClinton. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote. And next, I'll entertain a motion for the engineering services contract.
I'll move that, that we enter, that we enter into contract with K S A Engineering for the community development block grant.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClinton, uh, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to, uh, approve the engineering services contract with K S A Engineering for the Texas Department of Agriculture Community De- Development Block Grant. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously unanimous vote.
Next item on the agenda was the sidewalk maintenance ordinance. Um, the new proposed subdivision ordinance will require sidewalks in the new subdivisions, uh, and, and that's to help kind of beautify the community and make the community a walkable, um, community. Uh, the new subdivision addresses this, and, and so this ordinance, um, addresses the obligation of the owner, the occupants, and the users of the real property, uh, of the sidewalk, driveway, or other, and who maintains that. The ordinance will also address the obligation of the owner of a budding property with a tree or part of a tree that is situated in the right of way, um, and, and who, who's, uh, to maintenance that. And so, uh, that night, it was, uh, committee did vote to recommend approval to full council.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty eighteen oh your four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McClinton, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McClinton to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero four, maintenance of sidewalks, driveways, and trees by property owners or occupants. Any discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote.
Next item is, uh, the sign ordinance, sign regulations. As most of you guys know, we've been working on this, uh, for quite some time. Uh, on July nineteenth, the Plan Zoning Commission voted to recommend adopting signed regulations to the zoning ordinance. Due to the number of changes that were made, the ordinance staff sought input from the community through a community survey, um, and, and made some changes based on, uh, the feedback. On November ninth, a workshop was held by the city council to examine the proposed changes and the community ser- from the community survey. Changes to propose ordinance were suggested to staff. Staff ma- staff made those suggested changes and has recommended approval. Committee voted to recommend approval to full council.
Any questions? Alright, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the sign regulation ordinance number two thousand one eight oh zero five.
Second.
The, uh, motion by Ms. Trussell, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen oh zero five sign regulations. Any discussion?
Well, I just, uh, again, wanna commend Jeremy and, and the commissioners again. They've worked on this for, I don't know, nine months, a, a year. And there were a lot of compromises made by not only the commissioners and, and staff, but also amongst the council members, and I think, uh, this is the way it's supposed to work. So, well done, guys.
Alright, we'll proceed to vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote.
Last item, and hopefully you guys be done with me, I'm sure you guys are tired hearing from me. Uh, it's gotta be some kind of record on a number of items, spoken counsel, but, um, the process to update the subdivision ordinance, uh, as long as it took for the sign ordinance, the subdivision took probably twice as long. We started the process back in March of two thousand sixteen. Uh, the pr- process started with meetings of developers in the community, receiving feedback on the direction they wanted to go. Uh, since that, the initial meeting, Freez and Nichols and city staff have worked together and sought feedback from council on two separate occasions, and to update the subdivision ordinance and adopt a policy that is right for our community. Um, I've mentioned a couple times when Mr. Williams wasn't here, but, um, Gene took a lot of the credit while he was here, but Mr. Williams and, and Gene have both worked tirelessly on this. Um, and so I appreciate their efforts that they've done for this and the guidance. I couldn't have done it without them, and, um, they were pretty instrumental with this. Um, so you have the subdivision ordinance in front of you. Uh, staff is excited about it, and we, we did vote to recommend approval for it. And, um, so the, the committee that night voted to recommend approval to full council as well.
Okay, questions for Jeremy? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve ordinance number twenty eighteen oh dash zero six, the subdivision ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Mr. Pendleton to approve ordinance number twenty eighteen oh zero six subdivision ordinance. Any discussion?
Any other comment?
Yes.
Uh, since we're dealing with the, uh, subdivision ordinance, we've had a considerable amount of loose discussion related to pro-rata and, uh, how it costs participation as far as, um, infrastructure and that type of thing. But dealing with this one particular issue, I honestly feel like that maybe council needs to, to look at this more formally on pro-rata, how that affects things for, uh, not necessarily the subdivision. That, that's just the stem line. And, um, anyway, that's, that's what I had to say.
Okay. But we'll, um, you know, I think we, we talked about it, uh, that evening, and I think there was a desire to, to have a more, um, defined policy and, and a way to, to guide action that, uh, I'm assuming Alan and y'all are gonna take for action.
Yes, sir. We are working on, on, uh, researching that.
Okay. John, I know you weren't there that evening for the meeting, but we had a fairly lengthy discussion about how the ordinance would be implemented and how it would allow for, uh, a different approach to be taken with pro- the pro-rata. And, um, I, I think out of that meeting was a, was the, the, uh, the idea that having a policy that would, um, describe how that would take place would, would help us in the future.
Did y'all discuss existing subdivisions?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
And, and coming up with some scenarios about maybe having some, some, uh, some ways to get some of those online.
Fair enough.
Um, I, I guess before we vote on this also, I wanna, I wanna thank, um, the, the staff and the council for the work on this ordinance. And I also wanna thank the local community for their participation in this. Uh, this is a, this is really important for Stevieville. This ordinance is gonna help guide what, um, is pending for us and, and as far as housing and, and the ability for family housing in our community to be, uh, developed in a consistent manner where, uh, it, it takes the, the, uh, the body of knowledge that's available, um, to, to make this successful for our community. And I think what Jeremy said is really important, it's really brief what he said, but this ordinance is built so that it works for our community. It's not just a boilerplate taken from somewhere else, and I really appreciate the work, uh, by all involved to tailor this to the needs, to allow, uh, just, uh, just to guide, uh, our, our city in the future. So with that, I'll, uh, we'll, we'll proceed to vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote. So Jeremy, does that mean you're, you're off the stage? Yeah, yeah. Okay, I, there, there's one more thing I wanted to say about that before we, we voted, and, and I wanna make sure this gets in the minutes, because you didn't mention it, Jeremy. When, when we saw this for the last time, we went back to where we started as a council, and we, we had a thirty-day, uh, review period by the community before we voted on this tonight. Because we wanted to make sure, hey, we, we put this thing together with input. Uh, there was a lot of work on it, but before we, um, voted tonight, we wanted to ensure that there was a, a period of time for, for the public to be able to look at it, and so that was done for thirty days. And it was from November seventh to December seventh, something like that, um, before tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that was, that was noted. Alright, next on the agenda is the monthly budget report. From Monica.
Mayor, council, um, this is the budget report for November thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. We are two months into our mystery, our target percentage is about seventeen percent. For our property tax, we received two hundred and thirty-five thousand in our property taxes for November, resulting in a hundred and seventy-seven thousand increase of the funds that we collected through November thirtieth of last year. For our sales taxes, we received five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in sales taxes in November, resulting in seventy-four thousand of our target budget from November thirtieth. And we received nine thousand less than last year, but we're going strong for this year. Um, the target budget for our operating revenue is three point nine five million. We received three point four seven million revenue. It's four hundred and eighty-one thousand under budget, and that's a result of our property taxes that are billed in October, but not due January thirty-first, um, or they don't become passed through. And, uh, other taxes which are due quarterly and annually, like our, uh, hot taxes. The target budget for our operating expenditures is three point one nine million. We expended two point nine eight million, resulting in two hundred and three thousand under budget. Our operating revenue received last year was three point three million as compared to the three point four seven million, um, resulting in a hundred and fifty thousand increase, and that's due to, uh, property taxes and some other income. The operating expenditures last year were two point seven four million as compared to the current year's two point nine eight million. Um, so two hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, and that's largely due to our liability insurance. We paid it annually this year instead of quarterly, which saved us about eighty-six hundred dollars last year in debt. And then for our new programs, the park maintenance department purchased their build rig, and the agenda management software has been purchased.
Okay, questions for Monica? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Dr. Hubbard. The, uh, Civil Economic Development Authority update. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just have three items for you this evening. One, finally, Panda has closed. We got a notification from them this weekend. They plan on starting construction this month, so we'll be looking forward to that. But the CETA be- the video that we showed you last, at the last meeting, so far has been viewed by over forty-four hundred people, so that's really a great thing. And then also, the last thing I wanted to mention to you, and everyone's invited to this, including the public, we're gonna be having a new board member orientation Thursday, January eighteenth. We don't know where it's gonna be yet, until we know how many people are gonna come to it. Uh, January eighteenth at two P M after the CETA board meeting. We'll have Jeff Moore speaking, and Jamie Havel from the governor's office will also be speaking. There is, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Thursday, uh, January eighteenth, two o'clock.
Go, go over that time and location again, please?
Well, we don't have a location yet.
Okay.
It's dependent on how many people respond. It's open to the public.
Okay.
We'll get some more information out about that, but it will start at two o'clock.
Okay.
Jamie Havel with the governor's office, and also Jeff Moore, the CETA attorney.
Okay.
So, uh, how, how do you respond? If, if you're willing, if you're wanting to?
We're gonna put, um, a call up there.
We'll get that addressed. We'll have an invitation go out to you, and then I'll get with the local media sources and have them, um, get an email, I guess, to, to, to public community.
Okay.
But we'll put something on our website as well, to, to notify people.
Okay.
We wanna get that out there now, 'cause we want as many people as interested to come to it.
Thank you.
Other questions? So the, um, the, the governor's office, the, the rep that's coming to talk, what, what is their background and what, what will they provide?
Well, the whole subject is economic development one-on-one, and also what they can do to help, um, Stevieville, put Stevieville on the map. So they're gonna give us resources that we can use, show how the community can be involved, and how we can go out and reach out to some of the source of resources that they have, that we can use.
Okay.
So with the, um, to learn something. I try to learn something every day.
Okay.
And I'm looking forward to learning something with Jamie.
Okay. Do you have, um, the, the total number of, um, companies that are l- looking at Stevieville right now? That are maybe primary job generators?
Well, I, I can tell you offhand, we have seven different companies that are looking right now. We met with a, a representative, and I'd say we, Jeremy, Ashley, myself, met last week with a company that's looking at, um, moving into Stevieville. So, like I say, seven are seriously looking at Stevieville right now. Various stages.
Okay, and, and those are not retail or, or commercial, those are?
The one I just mentioned was a retail, but there are seven primary job generators that are looking at Stevieville.
Okay.
We're at various stages of them looking at us, and we're still under consideration, yes.
Okay. And, and what would you say are, are the most important things for our community to, to be aware of relative to, to those seven? I mean, what are they most interested in? Work, workforce, infrastructure? What, what do you hear, just?
It's really interesting that, that you ask that. Number one thing is educated workforce and an available workforce. Those are even more than incentives. Having an available workforce is number one. And then I would say right after that, training, and then also transportation. But, and then I would say after that, a close, really, uh, one A or one, or one B, I guess the one A, B, C, and D. And then it's having the infrastructure, 'cause, you know, I talked to a developer friend of mine, and we were talking about, you know, there was one project that looks like it's not gonna come here, but we're still on the map, but it looks like it's not coming. I said, what can we do to get Stevie- so, s- we can get Stevieville that more companies can look at us, and I says, well, what you can do to separate yourselves from everyone else, because, you know, you're in this rural environment, is have the infrastructure that's available, that, you know, you can market it and say, you know, you've got, you've got the water available, you've got the syrup that's available, you've got the roads that are available. That will set us apart from the rest of these cities, 'cause that's what we're competing for. So I would say that, and then also the, the training and transit, the training and workforce development.
Okay.
Are the things that we need to, to look at, to focus on.
Okay, one, one, one more question.
Sure.
The, the data, um, that we have available for the demographics in Stevieville, and how are you using that?
I, I tell you how I use it, well, there are a couple things. One, a lot of the data that we have, unfortunately, is metroplex. So what we've gotta do is dig a little bit deeper and work with some of the local boards, and get data that is specific to E-Rath County. But we can take that data that we have and go, and market that data like, just like the, uh, the training, the facilities that we have available here, and take that to different companies and say, hey, this is what we've got. And that's one way that we can, that we use that data. And so, but it, it's a, I tell you, it's quite a chore to, to dig up that data, to data mine it, but it ca- it can be done.
Okay. Counsel, if you'd just allow me, I, this is an area that I'm very interested in, um, as far as our demographics are concerned. And I, um, I was doing some research here recently and learned that the twenty twenty census work has already begun. And I don't know if we, as a county or a city, have started participating in that yet. But when I first came on council, one of the, one of the questions that I was interested in was our, our population numbers and, and where they came from. And I, I went to the council of governments and asked them, uh, you know, what our numbers were and how they, how they derived those, and some of that dealt with the, the number of, um, single-family homes we had, what the occupancy of those, and, and the result from the census. And so I, I was looking this week at the, at the census, the twenty ten census data, and I was, I was very a- alarmed to, to see the difference, the disparity between Stevieville and some surrounding communities when you look at the, the number of, um, occupants that the census revealed for Stevieville. It's much lower than other surrounding communities. And if economic development is going to, to provide a, a true picture of what our, I mean, we, we had this discussion in our last, the work session, what is the daytime population of Stevieville? Um, and you, you read these, these documents, John, and they tell us that it's like twenty-three to twenty-five thousand. There is no way that's accurate.
And a- another thing too, uh, whether it's on one side of the, the city of, the boundary or not, we need to look at the whole community and, you know, really, you know, we're forty-three thousand people. And that's how we should market this community, is at forty-three thousand. And so, we're gonna redirect that. That's one of the things we are doing, is looking at the whole community, because you're right, just like, uh, a lot of the businesses that we have are outside right now, until we annex them, are, are outside the, the community. So, uh, actually, when Jeremy and I, we talked to a developer, he said a lot of people didn't realize that we are, are as big, the community is as big as what we really are. So we gotta do a better job of conveying that message, that Stevieville is, is more than twenty-three thousand people.
Okay. So, J- John and Alan, let me ask you this question. Do, do we know if we, as a community, responded to the local update of census addresses by December fifteenth of last year, to ensure that we were able to provide a list of local addresses to the decennial census?
I believe we did.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, uh, looking at this, this information, it's a, it's a great briefing, and I'll provide it to the council about the schedule for the census begins th- this spring. And, I mean, this is so important for economic development. It's also important because the money through the cog that flows from Meals on Wheels, for nine-one-one, all that, that federal money is, is distributed based on what the census data. all that federal money is distributed based on what the census data says. And so, we've gotta get in front of this, and as a community, and let me just, let me just say this quickly and I'll stop, because I know that, we've got a short, we're almost gonna have record time here, and I'm slowing us down. But let me just say this, in 2010, the average household size in Stevensville was recorded in the census as two-point-two-seven. Renter occupied homes was recorded at two-point-oh-six. Now, you tell me a rent house in Stevensville that has two people in it, I, and I'll be surprised. I looked at Brownwood, Comanche, Dublin, Glen Rose, Graham, Granbury, Hamilton, Mineral Wells, and I threw College Station in there just because it's a college town that would have the similar numbers. The average for those towns over the household size was two-point-four-nine, against Stevensville was two-point-two-seven. The renter occupied average was two-point-four-one, and Stevensville's was two-point-oh-six. So, I think our population has been underreported in the 2010 census. And if we can, if we can look at that and correct it, it'll help us in a number of ways. Economic development being one of them, as people are looking at us trying to figure out, is there really a workforce there or not? Because they look at the workforce demographics.
And they look over it, and they see that it's the number that they see. So, that's what we need to do.
So, I guess, my point and the reason I wanted to bring this up during your report tonight, John, is that I think your position is very important in CETA to help facilitate the, making sure that we, as a rural community, have this done right. And, you know, working with the City Administrator, Alan, you know, asking for your help here, and just counsel for us to make this a priority on the to-do list, I guess, because these numbers influence so many things. And once they're done, it's ten years before they're updated, so...
Well, one thing I will be doing this Friday, I'll be meeting with the Economic Development District Board in Arlington, and we're gonna be talking about, this is one of the items that we're talking about. And I'll make sure that this gets brought up.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. All right, then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move a doc consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. McClinton, approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Now, proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous vote. Comments by City Administrator, Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a couple of comments to make. I wanted to let the council know and everyone in the audience know that a lot of times, cities do plans, and because of whatever occurs after the plans are developed, they tend to be more reactionary than proactive, and the plans kinda go on shelves. Early part of the summer, we did a strategic plan for the city, and we have not said a lot publicly about that strategic plan. I did want to let everybody know that that has not been a backburner issue, that we talk about that at every staff meeting, or almost every staff meeting, our strategic plan. To refresh your memories, we had four specific goals set out in that. That was infrastructure, leisure activities, asset, leisure activities and assets, finance and economic development. I thought over the next several months that I would bring one of those goals and discuss where we are in that with our objectives and how we're meeting the strategic plan that you established, or that you and staff established. Again, I think, you know me, that I am a, I try to be a strategic thinker and a planner for the future, and it's critical that we keep an eye on the plan that we develop. We'll probably do the same exercise to revise the strategic plan sometime in the early summer. I also wanted to, this kind of parallels with that, and it goes hand-in-hand with that. We're rolling out a program within the city to our employees called Stevensville Pride, and you've heard me mention that a time or two. Pride stands for Personal Responsibility and Developing Excellence. And the reason I'm bringing that out tonight is we're gonna tie our pride initiative to our strategic plan. And I also wanted to let everybody know that Friday, January the twelfth, is going to be our Stevensville Pride Day. And I think Stacy has T-shirts for each council member. We have purchased T-shirts for our employees, and we're encouraging our employees to wear those T-shirts that day. We want to develop excellence in our systems, our programs, and our service delivery to our residents. They deserve the best, and that's what we're working together. We have a charter review committee meeting Thursday, the fourth, finance committee and council workshop on the eleventh. Stacy asked me to remind everybody that filing for place on the May ballot is January seventeenth through February the sixteenth. We're planning a personnel committee meeting on January twenty-third. We are in the process of scheduling the open meetings training for sometime in January, which brings me to my last comment. And that is that beginning in February, we're gonna try to cut down the number of monthly meetings that we have. We are going to schedule, of course, we'll have the first Tuesday as the regularly scheduled meeting, but we're gonna target any committee meetings or workshops or any additional meetings that we need during the month for the third Tuesday of the month. I'm not gonna say it's gonna happen every month, but that's our target, is to have a more regularly scheduled meeting schedule rather than just as meetings pop up. And that's my, that's my report.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Barnes? All right. Mr. McClinton?
I would just wish everybody a happy and prosperous New Year.
The Oxford House Soup Supper is January twenty-ninth. So, I wanna remind everybody to buy their tickets for that. It is to-go soup supper, and you just drive by the schoolhouse and get your soup and dessert and salad, so... January twenty-ninth, tickets are on sale already.
Okay.
Reminder, you're at County Junior Livestock Show this week, so glad to support both of you.
Cold weather is a reminder.
That's right.
Mr. Warren, I'm with us tonight, we wish him well and speedy recovery from his illness, and I'll just...
I thought of something else.
Okay.
January twenty-second is the forum for the county candidates running for office, and that's at, Shelby, help me, it's at Agave, right? City Hall at Agave on January twenty-second, if you're interested in hearing from all the candidates, so...
Okay. All right, I wanna, just two things. I wanna thank the council for their hard work. The agenda tonight is the result of many, many hours of hard work. Staff, your support of the council to bring these together, and just really appreciate the great work, you know, bringing all this together. And many meetings in the November and December timeframe. And I just wish everyone a very happy New Year, and we'll look forward to 2018. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're not gonna have the executive session tonight. We don't have the info we expected, so that agenda item will not be necessary.
I'll move to adjourn.
So, we'll adjourn at six forty-eight. Thank y'all.
Oh, Sweetwater's hopping in.
It's a great name, though, Sweetwater.
Well, I'm sure it got its name because of the taste of the water along the way. Probably from the Indians.
My wife was Snyder. She didn't think it was too sweet.
No.
Well, I prefer La Mesa, I didn't think Snyder was a good one. Or Big Spring.
Yeah.
Yep, Big Spring, it's Big Spring. And you loved it. You know what?
Good job in that hotel, Big Springs.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Yeah, maybe it's...
Yeah, they filmed Midnight Cowboy, the beginning of that movie.
You know what, I knew that, and I forgot about that.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order at five-thirty tonight. Welcome to everybody who's here. Our first order of business will be to consider approval of the minutes from November fifteenth of 2017. Commissioners, are there any questions or any revisions? Hearing none, I'll then entertain a motion to accept or deny the minutes from our last meeting.
I make the motion. Don't we accept?
I second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes from our last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, likewise? And that passes. Our first order of business tonight will be a public hearing on case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-seven. Jeremy?
I'm taking minutes, too, so, all right.
Understandable.
Bear with me a little bit. Captain Dong Dong Duan and Phil Rainey, representing PRVS Holdings LLC, are requesting a rezone of the property located at one-hundred Wolf Nursery Road, Suite one-ninety-eight, from B two retail commercial district to B five restaurant with alcohol, beverage services. The comprehensive plan does call for R two commercial, and in your packet, you should have what the uses are for B two and B five. The water is served by the city water main located on Wolf Nursery Road and a six-inch sanitary sewer main located on Wolf Nursery. The property is fronting Wolf Nursery Road. Just to give you guys a little direction, that's over there near the Staples, in the Staples Shopping Center, and you can see by the aerial. That aerial is a three-hundred-foot circle, so there isn't any churches or schools in that area for, when it comes to alcohol. The staff does recommend, doesn't have any objections to the rezone, the property at Wolf Nursery. They need to meet the state requirements for serving alcohol, but it does comply with our comprehensive plan. And I'll entertain any questions. I know Mr. Dong Dong Duan is here, and he can answer any questions, too, when you guys get to that point, so...
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now open a public hearing for case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-seven. If there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this case, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dong Dong Duan. Nice to meet you. Actually, first time here, first time, first time to open a new restaurant in Texas. I got a restaurant in Oklahoma. I'm from Oklahoma. Yeah, we are planning to open a new Japanese restaurant, which we located at one-hundred North Waffle North Road. Suite number is one-ninety-eight. Yeah, and also with sushi bar and also selling alcohol, like Japanese beer, sake, domestic beer and wine, something like that. Yeah, most people like that, so I hope you guys like that. Thank you. Sorry, our first time kinda have this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll ask if there's anybody who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this case. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing for this case, and I'll ask the commissioners, do you guys have any questions? All right, then now I will entertain a motion on case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-seven. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the case passes.
Did we need a motion?
We didn't.
Yeah, we didn't, so we didn't have a motion.
I was asking who made the motion, because I was...
I'll now entertain a motion.
I move, I so moved to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded for case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-seven. All those in favor now, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And this case passes. All right, we're now going to, actually, we're gonna flip numbers four and five. So, we're going to switch to the public hearing of case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-eight, which is a rezone. Jeremy?
Yeah, public hearing case zero-zero-eight, two thousand, RZ two thousand seventeen zero-zero-eight. Advocate Lonnie Alsup is requesting a rezone of the property being part of Lot Ten, as recorded in document number two thousand sixteen zero-two-seven-seven-nine of the official public records of E wrath County, Block one fifty-two of the city addition to the city of Stevensville. And he wants to rezone it from industrial to B two commercial district. The, this is really more of a house cleaning item. As you can see from the aerial, the, he actually, there's three parcels right there that will get replatted in the next item. Those three parcels will be combined, and so typically, you don't want three different parcels with two different zonings or one parcel with two different zonings. So, the item, it will be rezoned to commercial. The property is served by city water and city sewer, and the property is fronting South Loop, which is maintained by Tex dot. Staff does not have any objections to rezone the property on one-fifty South Loop. The proposed zoning lines with the comprehensive plan and similar zoning nearby. And I can entertain any questions that you may have.
I'll now open a public hearing for anybody who wishes to come forward and speak in favor of this rezone. Hearing, seeing none, I'll ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition. Seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing, and I will open it up to questions and comments from commissioners. Does anybody have anything to ask Jeremy? All right, I'll now entertain a motion on case number RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-seven.
So moved.
Eight. Eight, zero-zero-eight.
Zero-zero-eight, sorry. All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All those opposed?
Who motioned, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I did. Who seconded?
Meta and Bill Muncy.
Muncy. Muncy.
Okay. Now we're going back. Our next, next item is a public hearing on case number CRP two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-one.
Zero-zero-seven.
Zero-zero-four.
Zero-zero-one, oh, it's, you know what, it's...
I know, it's, there's a mistake on there.
Gotcha, okay.
Advocate Lonnie Alsup is requesting a replat of Lots Three, part of Ten, as recorded in document two thousand sixteen zero-two-seven-seven-nine of the official public records of E wrath County. And six R, Block one fifty-two of the city addition of the city of Stevensville, E wrath County, into Lot Twelve, Block one fifty-two of the city addition of the city of Stevensville. The current zoning is Block one fifty-two, as you guys seen it, there's two different zonings there. Lot, Block one fifty-two, Lot Three, six R is zone B two, and part of Lot Ten is zone industrial. The comprehensive plan calls for it to be retail commercial district. The property is served by six-inch city water main and an eight-inch sanitary sewer main. The property is fronting South Loop, which is maintained by Tex dot. The proposed replat complies with all applicable state and local requirements, and staff recommends approving the proposed replat. And just for future reference, the, you know, plating's, and you guys may know this, so I'm not trying to... But plating's pretty much ministerial, ministerial, so if it meets all the local and state requirements, then we have to approve. And that's what this does.
Okay, pardon me, I'll now open a public hearing for case number zero-zero-one. If there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this, please come forward and with your name and address. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask the commissioners, do you have any comments or questions on this replat? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to accept or deny case RZ two-zero-one-seven dash zero-zero-one.
I move to approve.
Motion has been made by Lisa Latouche and seconded by Nick to approve case number zero zero one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And this passes. Next, we will have a public hearing on case number TF two zero one seven dash zero zero one.
Uh, this item is, uh, considered recommended amendment to the twenty thousand thirty comprehensive plan with amendment to the thoroughfare plan by changing the classifications of Christie Plaza from a proposed mi- minor arterial and Lockhart Road from a proposed local road to a proposed collector streets. Um, as, as you guys may remember, uh, back in July, we, we heard this, this item, uh, the development and some of the uses have, uh, the conversations have evolved. Um, there's, um, a, a large development off of Wolf Nursery, um, that kinda changed a little bit of how we, we brought this forward. Um, but from the aerial, you can see that, um, and it's really kinda point this out, the, you got the, let me get my bearing here while I'm talking. So, you got the three yellows to the, to the right that are below, uh, Washington. We're gonna leave the one on the very far right, which is Wolf Nursery, and then the other two will, uh, the, the one to the left of that will become a collector and the one that's in the middle, it, that doesn't have a line, which is Lockhart, will also become a collector. So, uh, it'll look something like that. Um, so the only, the, the two that we're, the one that we're changing is the Christie Plaza will be a collector and Lockhart becomes a collector. And then, um, Wolf Nursery will continue to be in arterial, which is the difference between what we brought to you guys back in July. Just a little bit of a difference when a collector, a collector's a thirty-six to forty-foot pavement, uh, sixty to seventy-foot right-of-way. Minor arterial is fifty-four to fifty-six foot of pavement, a hundred to a hundred and twenty foot right-of-way. So, to give you a little idea of what, what those roads look like, the collector road, uh, you know, would be maybe like a Harbin Drive. I think this is an example of Harbin. Um, so typically you could have two lanes and maybe like a, a turn lane or a center lane with the, with the right-of-way width. Um, typically you'd have sidewalks or some right-of-way on the outside with some trees or so, so there's plenty of room for that. The minor arterial would be like your Wolf Nursery, which is a hundred to a hundred and twenty foot right-of-way. Typically, uh, four lanes, um, um, two on each side. Sometimes it's divided by a, by a median, which like Wolf Nursery is. So, that would continue, Wolf Nursery would continue across the, across the road, which is what's in our thoroughfare plan now. So, that's, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm open to any questions with any of that, um, and, and the idea is to try to, um, help with development. There was, going back to that arterial that's going through basically Christie Plaza would be a hundred and, a hundred and twenty foot going through the middle. That, that development would really, would really kinda damper, I guess, or, or, or hinder that development through there. We did pass a plat contention upon us, uh, reclassifying this road, um, from arterial to collector. So, any other questions or any questions, I'll be happy to entertain any. It's the one to the far, it's the one in the middle, right? The, the three yellow ones on the bottom? Yeah, you got the three, the three, three on the right, on the, on the bottom. The very first one on the right, which would be to the, to the east. That one, it will not change, that one will remain the same. The lock, the street that's unlabeled now, which is Lockhart, will actually get a, a collector classification. And then Christie Plaza, which is the, the second yellow one, will go from arterial to collector. So, we're, we're giving up one arterial, but we're, we're gaining a collector with that.
Okay, um, I guess we need to have a public hearing on this, so I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion to approve or deny this, this hearing. This case number TF two zero one seven dash zero zero one. I move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Nick and seconded by Bill Muncy to approve case number zero zero one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And this, this passes, so. Finally, we're gonna have a public hearing on case number zero, I'm sorry, ORD two zero one seven dash zero zero two.
You guys remember, we, we heard this last, uh, month, we did not hold a public hearing, which is required for this, so, um, we're, we're hearing this again in, in a public hearing fashion. But on October eighteenth, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a workshop. The commission heard from local, um, local citizens, uh, provides communication towers for transmission and from a local radio club that utilizes communication towers. Staff was asked to make changes based on the recommendations for the two guests. The proposed ordinance includes the recom, recommended changes and is ready for recommendation to city council after a public hearing. And I believe last meeting it, it passed unanimously, so.
I'll now open a public hearing for this case number zero zero two. If there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this case, please come forward and state your name and address. Hearing none, I'll ask for anybody who would like to come forward and speak in opposition. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll turn this over to the commissioners and ask if there's any other questions of Jeremy. Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to accept or deny case number zero, ORD two zero one seven dash zero zero two.
I move to approve.
Okay, motion has been made by Bill Muncy, seconded by Nick Robinson to approve case number ORD two zero one seven dash zero zero two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And this ordinance pass, this hearing case passes, so. I believe, believe that's cover, pretty much covers everything, so Jeremy, any other final words?
Lot of work, short period of time, appreciate you guys and Merry Christmas to all you guys.
Very much. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Motion has been made, but has not been seconded.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Lisa Latouche to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?